WDEB News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month, and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally-owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equuson Leader, Member FDIC.
Fintress County Board of Commissioners is called to order. Please rise for the presentation of callers by Clark Range, GROTC Color Guard, and then followed by the pledge to the flag by Jimmy Johnson, First District Commissioner, and opening prayer by Lester Gooding, Fourth District Commissioner.
Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors diverse, march. Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Order, colors. Order, arms.
If you will bow your heads, please. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Father, we ask you to bless each and every one that's attended this county commission meeting tonight. And I also ask you, Lord, to bless this commission and lead, guide, and direct us in the decisions that we have to make. And I ask it in Jesus' precious, holy name. Amen.
Amen.
We'll have roll call by Marilyn Stevens, our county court clerk.
Jimmy Johnson.
Here.
Justin Miller.
Here.
Jackie Reagan.
Here.
Kim Davidson.
Here.
Kenny Hughes.
Here.
Donald Williams.
Here.
Lester Gooding.
Here.
Jeff Green.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
Wade Matthews.
Here.
All present, we do have a quorum. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the May 21, 2018 County Commission meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? Any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim, four, not against.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval of notary applications. We have Leslie Clark Ledbetter, Randall A. Ledbetter, Roxy Martin, Anna Grace Hull, and Sandra Andries.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim, four, not against.
Motion carries. Before our next one, I've got a statement to make. After a lengthy investigation that determined that the Fintress County Finance Director had breached the trust of the Finance Committee, the Fintress County Commission, and broken the public's trust regarding actions that were in violation of our policy precedents, the Finance Committee voted to dismiss. As we have learned, our policy precedents, the way we actually do things, especially in budgeting, are more important than what's written down in a manual. These policies and procedures established methods of approving changes in pay or pay raises throughout the county. These have been compromised, as has our trust in the person whose job it was to look after the finances of Fintress County as a whole. Therefore, I am compelled to provide a statement as to the events and their outcome. Firstly, as county executive and a member of the Finance Committee, I have a sworn fiduciary duty to investigate when I am made aware of any such allegations. This duty is not a "may investigate," or "if I feel like it," or even if I believe it or not. I have a sworn duty to take any allegation seriously, no matter how I am approached about it. I, along with the members of the Finance Committee, this includes Larry Cooper, Kim Davidson, Jimmy Johnson, Jeff Green, Scott Norris as road supervisor, and Mike Jones as superintendent of schools, have a sworn duty to our respective offices, but also, and most importantly, to the people of Fintress County, to fully and openly investigate any and all of these allegations that are brought to our attention. Brings me no joy to do so. As in everything, there's always an element of emotion, especially with people with whom I have worked extensively. However, a true leader and someone who genuinely understands the role of county executive, is quickly and fully able to set these emotions aside when the time comes to make a tough choice of a personal relationship over a sworn duty. It is no decision when it comes time to do the right thing. To those who remain indignant and adopt a "how dare you investigate" attitude, especially those who hold public office or seek to hold public office, and more importantly, to those who have said that this investigation should have been resolved privately or in-house or one-on-one, I say absolutely no. My duty is to the public. I will not apologize for bringing this information into the public forum and for holding an investigative meeting in public to bring the facts to light and discover additional ones. These types of cover-ups are exactly the platform that I ran against four years ago, and I hate and abhor them even more today. I did not take an oath to make and keep friends. I took an oath to uphold the duties here to the best of my ability for the benefit of all of Fintress County. In doing so, I call out anyone who would want to return to the old ways. In this investigation, to make it short, we investigated some raises that we thought were inappropriate that the Finance Chairman, the County Executive, Finance Committee, and the Fintress County Commission were not aware of, that were quite substantial and out of the ordinary. And the conclusion that we had from this was that the trust and the transparency that we had so stressed had been compromised. And on a vote of four to one, the vote was taken in a Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday to dismiss the director, and that must be confirmed by the full commission tonight. So, number eight, discussion and recommendation from the Finance Committee in regards to the Fintress County Finance Director.
Mr. Chairman, as Finance Chairman, I guess it's my duty and obligation to present the commission with that vote, which we done last Wednesday evening at 4:30. Well, it wasn't at 4:30. We started the budget meeting at 4:30. It followed the budget meeting shortly after. That vote was four to one with the committee members that were there, so I'm submitting that to the commission as a motion to uphold the commission's or the committee's vote.
I'll second.
Motion and a second.
Question.
Question's been called for. When question's called for, there can be no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
I don't have enough information that I've been trying to gather, so I have to vote against.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one against.
Nine, four, one against. The motion is approved. Okay, next on the agenda is discussion of approval of the Senior Center applying for an ARC grant for the addition to the Fintress County Senior Citizens Building. Alice, would you like to come forward, please? And do you have any of your board members or anything that can come up as well?
Yes, the Advisory Board Chairman, Mr. Billy Jennings, is here if anyone has any questions for him. And also, our trustee for the Advisory Board, Mr. Gary Peters, is here. They have both worked diligently for many years on looking at avenues and ways to be able to expand the senior center so that we can continue our services. And that's really where we're at. The services that we have, we need more space for. We need to be able to expand them, and then we need to add some existing service or some new services and programs. We have worked with Nathaniel Green's company. I know that y'all are all familiar with him. His company's working on the Palma Fire Hall right now. And he is the one that worked up these plans and the proposal. This is just a projection. This is phase one. We're simply requesting that with the information we give you, that you will allow us to apply for an ARC grant. We would like to use the Area Agency on Aging and Disability to work with us on that grant and see if we can be about getting that. And that grant is due the end of September 1st of November.
Any questions for Alice? I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant or the right to apply for the grant. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten, four, not against. Motion passes. Congratulations, Alice.
Thank you.
If you would remain up here just for a couple more things. Next, we have consideration of appointment of Senior Center Advisory Board members.
Yes, our Advisory Board nominated two persons from the community, and they wanted your approval to add them to our Advisory Board. One is Mr. Mike Jones, Director of Schools, and the other is Mr. Jimmy Johnson, County Commissioner. And we would like to add them to our Advisory Board.
Jimmy is getting old. I'll entertain a motion to add those to the Advisory Board. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pass.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
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 Larry.
Four.
Four.
Motion carries. And one more, Alice, consideration of Resolution 201-8-14 of approval of an application for the Tennessee Arts Commission Grant and for the Fintress County Senior Center.
This is a grant that the Area Agency, they support it each year, and they have really been encouraging me for the last several years to apply for it. So, this year, with your approval, we have a community sponsor. The Union Bank has agreed to sponsor $500, and we're requesting $500 from the grant. And what we're hoping to do with those monies, or we will do if we receive the grant, is to provide an art class. The instructor will be Ms. Connie Parker. She's one of our renowned artists in this county. And we will provide classes for eight weeks. All supplies and materials will be paid for through the grant money, and it will be no cost to the seniors. And there's no limit on the class size.
That sounds good.
No, it don't cost you nothing.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
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 Jim. Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade. Four.
Motion carries. I'm going to deviate from our, thank you, Alice.
Thank you, permission.
Deviate from our agenda just for a second here. We had good news just recently that Commissioner Wade Matthews set another state and a national record for weightlifting. He moved up to the masterclass age of 44 to 49 years old and bench pressed 500 pounds, set a national record with that, and that's his third national record he's set and two state records that he holds. So, if everybody would, applause for Wade, his hard work.
That was three states and two national.
Three state and two national. I stand corrected. I'd have took the other way, though. We do have a special guest in the audience tonight. I would call him the gray ghost, but I'd make that a falsification, too. Representative Kelly Kiesling, would you like to come forward, sir? Right over here is one, Kelly. Kelly, I go back about, I won't say how many years, Kelly.
Too long, don't we? Is this the one? Is it on?
Yeah.
Thank you. You caught me off guard. I was over there getting ready to. I didn't know I was going to be up this quick. But anyway, I brought each of you all a little gift tonight. Now, you remember about a year ago this time, I brought a whole bunch of literature, enough to take you completely through 12 months of reading. Do you remember that? Well, tonight, I don't have all that amount of reading, but I do have a little gift bag over there that's got the latest Tennessee Blue Book in it for you. And things are rather well in the state, I might add, if you'll allow me quickly. I gave you one of these, I think, last year, and you're going to have another one. You're going to have a new one, 18, 19 fiscal year, in that packet. But we're sitting now with a, you know, we did balance our budget again. We have to. It's constitutional. It's, we fully funded the BEP, our program. We have a total budget of 37 and a half billion. Just some high points that, and some, you know, just a summary of just where we are right now. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to report that our great state has a AAA bond rating. And that is, that's been scored by all three major rating agencies. So, strength in numbers. So, we are in a very financially solid position as a state. Our state retirement, those of you that are participating in that, we're the fourth strongest in the nation. We have the lowest debt of any state. It's just, we, you know, this administration since January 11 has created, and this is an absolute fact, over 400,000 new private sector jobs. So, and it's just, it's great to be here. You know, I don't know how much more I can say as far as a state. So, I just want to be here tonight, thank you, each one of you all, for your service. We appreciate you. We know the checks that you receive each month isn't reflective of the time and the service that you serve to this county and the entire county and your constituents. So, we appreciate you very much. And I might add, in closing, I really appreciate the relationship over the past four years that I've had with Executive Mike there because he's really, he's been a good line of communication for me, and that's what each of us need in Nashville. We need all of our mayors, city and county, and all of our county commissioners as well to keep that line of communication going because with all the legislation that's filed each year, it's just impossible physically and mentally to keep up with it. But again, thank you for your service, and I appreciate the time that you've given me. Thank you. And call me anytime. Cell numbers on each legislative card. I hope everyone has got me on speed dial. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly. Next on the agenda is consideration of Resolution 201-8-15 to forego any further individual bonds except for the Fintress County trustee and elect coverage under the county's general liability policy for all elected officials and employees. Leslie, do you want to reiterate that a little bit?
Sure, Mike. Thank you. Essentially, Local Government Pool, which is our insurance carrier for our liability policy, has come to us. There's a new law out there which says that carrying individual bonds on county employees and/or county officials is essentially obsolete. And with the new legislation, it allows the county to elect by resolution to go under our general liability policy, which offers a minimum of $400,000 per occurrence, whereas an individual bond typically only offers a total coverage of, say, $100,000 or $50,000. So, this is additional coverage with no additional cost in our policy because the actual coverage is already there. We just have to elect to use it at the expiration of each of the county official's bonds. Now, that being said, the trustee is exempt from that because her bond is required to be a percentage each year of the tax monies collected from the previous year. So, it changes, and it's usually over a million dollars. So, the statute does not allow the trustee to opt into this coverage under the insurance company. It's a cost saving, so there will no longer be a premium for each of these bonds paid out. In addition, like I said, it won't be any additional charge on our insurance because that coverage is already there.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. It sounded like. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade. Four.
Ten, four, unanimous, passes. Number 13, discussion of wheel tax exemption for rescue squad and fire department volunteers, and discussion of how the volunteer departments update their information to the county court clerk and our HR department for verification of volunteer status.
I'd let Marilyn tell her what she needs in her office.
What do you need in your office, Marilyn, for that to happen?
An update of each member. And I've got to be a member for at least one year before they can get the free plate. You get one free plate per year. So, we're asking, do I charge a wheel tax for that one plate, or do we not?
Any rescue squad member or volunteer fire department member who has worked for one year is eligible under state law to be granted one free wheel tax sticker.
No, no, no. Let me jump in there and say, under state law, the new law here says that they're eligible to receive the state fees to be waived under the state law. The wheel tax is a county option.
Okay.
It's a county regulation, and only the commission can suspend that, which goes along with what the state did. But you all have to vote to suspend the wheel tax option for these particular persons. And I think what it says here is pretty clear that they need a sworn affidavit from the chief of the fire department or the volunteer organization confirming the person is an active volunteer, and that you have also, they'll need a copy of this resolution if you all pass it, to waive the motor vehicle tax under this exemption. But in addition to that, if you all remember, Local Government Pool, who's our insurer carrier, I get a lot of information back and forth with them. Over the years, we have been required to keep a copy of all the volunteers' driver's license, because if y'all will recall, there was an accident where the driver of the fire truck did not have, or my rescue squad vehicle didn't have a valid driver's license. And there were some questions about coverage, and Local Government Pool said, hey, we're going to give you a pass this time. Get a copy of everyone's driver's license. I don't think that the county has those on file. In addition, Human Resources Director's been reviewing this information from the fire chiefs that she has, because we pay these volunteers, apparently, for responding to calls, and Larry can probably speak to that a little bit more. I mean, it is a volunteer organization, absolutely. But there is a little bit of compensation that goes with it. So, if the county pays anybody by check, and if they're covered by our insurance, then they got to have an I-9, which is a federal law, says you better verify everybody's eligibility to work in the United States. We don't have one of those on file for everybody, but we're going to have. So, essentially, we would like for you all to pass that if you're going to exempt them from the wheel tax, they need to provide this affidavit, and it needs to be updated every year. They need to understand it is for one vehicle. They must be active. And if the county is going to continue to pay them, we must, every time they get a wheel tax exemption form, to take to Marilyn's office. They'll give us a copy of their driver's license, and they'll verify their I-9 status. Fair enough? So, I'm asking a lot, but it's just the law.
I just have a question concerning the wheel tax. The wheel tax money is earmarked for the Board of Education. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Should we ask the Board of Education if they want to forego this money? I mean, I hate to sit here and vote on, you know, it's not much money, but I hate to make that decision for the Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with table as to we consult with, it'd be courteous enough to at least talk to the Board of Education.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? It does go into effect July 1. Is she going to charge them until then?
You all meet on the 28th, right?
Yeah.
So, we could do, take this up there.
Put that on the agenda for the 28th.
Okay, on the agenda for the 28th. Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade. Four.
Kim, four, not against.
Who will contact?
I'll do that. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of approval of the Fintress County E-911 budget.
In the budget meeting last Wednesday, for a third time, we requested their budget to be presented to us again. The one that the commission passed, or the Budget Committee passed, does include a part-time person for the next fiscal year, but has no raise in it yet until the commission determines what raise they're going to give for the county employees. So, they actually have to have their submitted to the state prior than we do. So, they're going to send this rough draft to the state to get approved, and then they can amend it once we do the voting process. So, I make a motion that we approve this budget.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade. Four.
Motion passes. Next, we've got some budget amendments. First one, Board of Ed.
The first one I've got, I guess we better do these separately, is to adjust budget lines to cover increased salary and benefit costs due to certified staff raise and to cover additional travel costs, which is the amount of $150,195.67.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next, Larry. This has got several in it. The first one is to adjust estimated budget amounts to cover actual expenditures due to increased use of substitutes. And there's actually two of those. One total of $4,017.88, and the other one, like $6,217,100. And what was that one on? It's Board of Ed, but... To adjust estimated budget amounts to cover actual expenditures due to increased use of substitutes. We're just moving $11,000 there. $21,026. If you look, if you look, you're moving $10,000 and $11,000. Okay. But, I mean, it goes to the total, it goes down to the total of $4,010. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next... The next one is to move $11,000, and to adjust budget lines to cover excess substitute teacher pay. That's the second one. Do I have a motion to pass that one?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Four. Four.
Four.
Four.
Four.
Four.
Four.
Four.
Four.
Motion passes. The next one is for $8,228.49 to adjust budget lines to use remaining coordinated school health grant funds and cover bonus payments in separate line. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next one's an amount of $2,400, and all it says is to adjust estimated budget to cover actual expenditures. Doesn't really give a definition of what we're covering. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't know what we're approving.
It says we're, if you look at that line item, it says the first line is attendance bonus payments for $150, attendance state retirement's $525, and medical insurance is $1,725, total is $2,400.
And it's coming out of repairs and maintenance, and out of salaries and wages, right?
Yes, 800 out of one, 1,600 out of the other.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. To adjust estimated budget to cover actual costs due to certified raises and related benefits, which is the amount of $5,726. Do I have a motion? This is under special education.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 In four, not against, motion passes, next... Next one's under physical services, total of $4,000. They're going to decrease accounts and bookkeepers, and increase clerical data processing and other expenditures by the same amount, $4,000. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Early childhood education to adjust budget lines to cover increased salary and benefit costs due to certified staff raises of $16,883, decrease bonus, social security, state retirement, medical insurance, increase supervisor 2305, teachers $10,166, educational assistance 3745, and teacher substitute 667, for the same amount, $16,883. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 I have one more for the Board of Ed. They've received some additional funding from the state for early childhood development in the amount of $21,280. They're just wanting to put in these line items so they can spend it. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Got one for the highway departments. They want to decrease expenditures by $6,000, highway bridge and maintenance laborers, and increase expenditures, $5,870 in highway bridge maintenance foremen, and $130 in other charges, lobbying, total of $6,000.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? Motion and a second, anyone wish to speak to the motion? Not, roll call vote.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next, the library. Library received a BEC grant of $500, and a Dollar General grant for $100, which goes into the summer reading program, total of $1,500.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Motion passes. One for the shares department, which is a Tennessee Highway Safety reimbursement grant in the amount of $4,154.35, came in on May the 31st, just the line items that need to be put in. We've done paid this, correct? This is just reimbursed, no line. Reimbursement only, okay. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to accept and approve.
Second.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. That's all we've got on the agenda. Any other business, ring for this commission.
Please be brief, Ms. Legg.
My name is Emma Legg, and I am here for a sixth time, standing up for truth, justice, and the law. I am proud to report that this most honorable board is also standing up for truth, justice, and the law, in so much as I understood from Attorney Ledbetter's legal opinion and her report that Fentress County will turn in a claim to the local government pool, that is, insurance company, for the cost of installing three culverts under Skyline Drive and digging a second ditch, due to wrongful acts made by three elected officials who served or is serving as our road supervisor.
Ms. Legg, let me stop you right there. No, I think our record reflects that you had insinuated, you had claims against the commission, this commission, for acts that took place...
This is my forum to report this truth.
Thirteen years ago and twenty years ago, and no one here on no record will you find that we're turning in a claim for that. I just want to go on the record to be clear.
I understand, I read your legal opinion, and I want to speak on that subject also. Okay. I said, I forget where I was at now, but this has been a great opportunity to show the voters, this board is now willing to stand up for our laws, which protects the rights of every citizen. But I must give the greatest of credit to my own Commissioner, Donald Williams, that just the wise and committed gentleman that he is, for he has worked for us and with me, as far back as 2008, when I worked for four years, but failed to get even one culvert installed at my property, which was needed due to the second natural waterway having been blocked by Blevins's levee, which caused our only ditch to become filled up from the loss of its rightful water. And also, in 2015, Donald tried for many months to arrange a meeting with Norris, until Donald and I gave up. Thus, in September 2015, I went to Cross and asked for his help to set up a meeting with Norris, because Norris refused to talk with me. Surprisingly, instead of helping us set up a meeting, Cross set about to disprove my statements that these water problems were factual, and that acts by developer and Blevins were illegal, and as a result, Cross's action delayed today's justifiable resolution since September of 2015. In response to Ledbetter's opinion that I should have, and still should sue this developer, I must state, that would have been frivolous, and would not have been judicious for me, and in fact, would have been nonsensical, since I needed only one culvert installed in our first natural waterway, which I was willing to pay for, in order to remove the detriment this developer placed on my property, and that would have given the value to my property I never had. And also, because our developer gave Skyline Drive to Fentress County four months before we purchased our home, therefore, it is Fentress County as owners of Skyline Drive who should have sued this developer. To illustrate how my lawsuit against this developer would not have been judicious for me, I propose to you all that if I had been given a property by Attorney Ledbetter, and then, four months later, a neighbor who had been harmed by a diversion of water through this property made by that previous owner, that is Attorney Ledbetter, then this neighbor should seek relief from me, for I am now said owner. But most notable is what Ledbetter omitted, which were, number one, the illegal levee Blevins built, which blocked water resulting in seven illegal alterations, and number two, Norris's four obstructions in our ditch, which even today are diverting water of the first waterway out of our ditch, and then Blevins's levee forces it to drain down on top our road. And also, number three, the dereliction of duty by Billy Beatty, who allowed the illegal construction of Skyline Drive in the first place, and then Beatty himself approved our inadequately drained and illegal road to be made a county road. You should acknowledge that any intentional omission by Attorney Ledbetter is in fact an untruth, and that was these three road supervisors' illegal acts, and therefore, it is our Fentress County Road Department that I could have sued. It should be noted that I reported this in 2016 to this board, after Cross also informed me at the March 2016 meeting that I must sue this developer, and likewise, Cross also admitted this very important fact, that these three road supervisors' acts were illegal. But it is without any question whatsoever that our Fentress County Road Department must treat all of Skyline Drive homeowners fairly and equally, according to how homeowners on any other road in Fentress County are treated, as our 14th Amendment guarantees. This is Glenda Washam's photograph. And you can acknowledge, from looking at this, this is the actual beginning of our first natural waterway, that is, a 600-foot wide natural draw, originating from an estimated 15-to-20-foot higher elevation to the south, and which drains north through Glenda's east-side yard. But our developer diverted all three waters of our first waterway by sloping our road to cause waters to drain into our only ditch, and to then drain west through the Leg property in the second waterway, via this developer's only ditch, which is inadequate. Now, it is obvious, in Glenda's photograph, this water from the south drains down to the edge of Skyline Drive, and naturally would have met Model Farm Road's surface water, as well as naturally would have met with the water from the north. But this developer's filling in to construct Skyline Drive blocked most of this water from draining into the center of its own draw, which was created from the combined force of all these three waters. But despite developer's blockage, I witnessed many times, over a six-and-a-half-year period, a small amount of these three waters draining over top our road and entering the center of its own draw. Note also that Blevins blocked these waters of the first waterway from entering their draw, except for water from the north, but for that water, Blevins left the north half of our street without slope. That is, Blevins intentionally created a swale, forcing this water from the north to drain down on top of our road for 300-plus feet to enter its own draw, which is exactly where it should have drained since the original construction. But a second ditch and a culvert was required, according to Fentress County 1973 regulations, to drain this water into the center of its own draw. But instead, Blevins defiantly ignored our laws and civil rights to build his levee purposely to cover up that diversion this developer made. And Glenda's photograph also envisions that nature simply had no means to separate these three waters, nor could these waters have made a 90-degree turn to drain west through the Leg property in our second waterway. And also, because water always takes the shortest path, therefore, these three waters chose to drain through their own draw, but could not choose to drain west through the Leg property in the second waterway. But Blevins built his levee to redirect water from the north back into its rightful draw, in order to reduce the amount overflowing the ditch at the Leg property, so to cover up developer's diversion of all three waters of our first waterway through our second waterway. Yet despite Blevins's reduction, and despite Scott Norris's four ditch obstructions in the first waterway, that is, three man-made, and one more also suspected man-made, which divert water out of our only ditch, for Blevins's levee to then force this water to drain down on top of our road to enter the Leg driveway in the second waterway, and this was also Norris's intended purpose, so to reduce the amount of water overflowing our only ditch at Leg property. But even with those two road supervisors' diversion, our only county road ditch overflowed still and drained through the Leg lawn. And tonight, I request each of you on this board, and Executive Cross, to contemplate the issue regarding any draw's purpose, by using your own reasoning powers as to why this draw should not be left as nature created, so that its drainage can be available for a 25, a 50, a 100, or even a 1,000-year rainfall. Thus, in this regard, you must decide to keep our draw as nature so perfectly made to handle all rainfall amounts today and into the future, as Tennessee law stipulates. For any concerned citizen, a copy of my sixth report with photo is available for anyone to read at John Mark Wendell's office in Jamestown, along with my first through my fifth full reports with photos also included. Here are copies of my sixth report and one photo for each commissioner and county executive. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Legg.
Mr. Cross, I think I'm going to have to, and you'll have to indulge me here, because this is a little lengthy. this is a little lengthy, as I always seem to be a little lengthy. I'm going to have to come in and clarify the information that was provided to Ms. Legg and to the Commissioners at the last meeting on the record, where y'all let me read it in once, if you'll just let me read it in one more time. You all asked me to give an opinion on the allegations that Ms. Legg brought before you a couple of times previously about the Skyline Drive issue, and I have responded with, dear Mr. Cross, based on the allegations and the legal claims and accusations made at previous meetings, and at the regular March Commission meeting, and in writing, I have to advise you, my clients, Mr. Cross and the Commission, to no longer respond to the allegations and legal claims against you all, both off the record, and certainly no response should be made on the record, as she has alleged misconduct and violation of law and statutes that would be considered impending litigation or a lawsuit. Local Government Pool says, if we know that there is potential for impending litigation or lawsuit, you cannot comment on that. If you do, you will lose coverage potentially. Ms. Legg makes allegations and legal claims based on a private developer's conduct that she, by her own admission, has known for 20 years, as records show she purchased the property in 1998. At least five different four-year-term commissions have come and gone. In addition, the road supervisors' conduct she makes allegations regarding are both over 13 years old and were three commissions ago. We have found no evidence that she sought legal remedies, such as a lawsuit at this time, either against the developer, or in regards to the county road supervisor, or even brought those information to the Commission, evidently. In addition, these are ancient actions that nothing this commission in 2016 or 2018 can or advised to address further as to previous commission actions or road supervisor actions, and certainly not to private developer actions. At this time, I've given my legal opinions based on the information that these Commissioners, the road supervisor and Mr. Cross, the road supervisor being the current road supervisor, Scott Norris, as well as on my own research, and I stand by these opinions. I've advised, number one, that the Commission's discretion is limited, and that the road supervisor, under the Tennessee Constitution, has his own discretion. You all cannot direct, and you cannot force, the road supervisor to do anything, to take any action, period, because you all are not the road supervisor. You can make recommendations, and you can deal with the budgets, although the road supervisor's budget essentially, and Chairman Cooper can attest to a little bit more detail about this, is set by federal law. You all just simply go in and rubber stamp that. His professional action, based on his professional opinion, is at his own discretion. You need to basic civic lessons occasionally in the separation of powers. I cannot go back over, and you all cannot go back over, the actions of prior administrations, nor can you take any action against a private developer 20 years later. And she's just acknowledged that, five months prior to the purchase of the property, the developer turned the road over to the county. Well, at that point in time, she would still have been well within her statute of limitations to seek action against a developer. You can recommend a road supervisor look at a situation, and if he, in his professional opinion, finds that it's warranted, then he can take that action. But the Constitution doesn't allow this commission, nor the Executive, nor anyone, to direct him to go against his professional opinion. He is required to be a professional. There are requirements to be road supervisor. You have to know about roads. You have to know about drainage. You have to prove that to the state before you can even run for road supervisor. I can assure you that this has been investigated. There's been several occasions that I believe you and the Commission and Mr. Cross have been out there. You've taken pictures. You've met with the road supervisor and others, and no one has ever recommended that her findings were warranted as far as any action to be taken on that road, or if any action that she suggested would be taken, it would just be detrimental to the drainage issue. She's certainly encouraged, and I encourage her, to take her findings to a lawyer, if she's dissatisfied with my legal assessment and my opinions, and if she's dissatisfied with the professional opinion of the road supervisor and this commission and the Executive. The law offers and has offered for the past 20 years, or at the very least, based on her own admissions, the last 13 years, an opportunity to seek legal remedies in the form of a lawsuit. The proper form, of course, would be in Chancery Court for some of her allegations, or in federal court for some others, but no actions have ever been filed. My opinion is that she's well within outside of her statute of limitations. She could have taken the developer to court 20 years ago, and she could have filed a private suit, and she could certainly, and is certainly encouraged, if she feels necessary, to seek private individual counsel. But in this administration's time, since she's come with her first allegations and insisted this commission remedy these allegations, there's been no lawsuit, but there has been several allegations against this commission that Local Government Pool, our insurer, believes that could be a potential claim. So I have to advise you that on the record, given the type of accusations she brings, you cannot address these as further they are legal claims, and basically, I have turned this over to Local Government Pool, giving them all this information. I'll provide them with a copy of the sixth complaint that Ms. Legg has, and if they felt that we needed to take any additional action, they would let me know. But I want to assure everyone that I didn't contact Local Government Pool to get them to pay for the culverts, and this is the exact opinion that was read into the record last time we addressed this. Copies are available in Mr. Cross's office from the Executive Assistant, Amanda Hicks. If anyone would like to take a look at it, and I'm so sorry that I took up so much of your time in rereading this to everybody, but I just want to be clear about what was actually opined by me and what was actually put into the record, and it's the nearly exact opposite of what Ms. Legg brings here today. I apologize, Ms. Legg, if you misunderstood that, and I do certainly encourage you, if you have any other legal questions, I cannot answer those for you, but I would certainly encourage you to seek out a private attorney if you feel like there's any further issues. And that attorney can respond to Local Government Pool.
Anything else?
I hope everybody's comfortable, because now I'm going to read all of this. Actually, I wouldn't do that to you. For anyone who doesn't know, I'm the one who was fired tonight. And as bad as that is, you know, I can stand to lose my house. I don't have health insurance now, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. At the same time, it's like the latest world's been lifted off of me, because they have put me through pure hell for two months now, so I'm glad it's over. Having said that, I would like to, for the public, just clarify a few things, because I feel like I've been wrongly accused on some items. So I noticed on the radio the other day, Mr. Cross said something about giving $7,000 raises to one of my employees. That raise was actually $9,000, and what he failed to point out was that a representative from Five Points Company had been to our office to talk to the County Commission, the Budget Committee, Finance Committee, about Obamacare and the records keeping that was about to start. You have to have someone to do the records, to do the filing with the IRS, to report every hour that every employee in the county worked, to get the forms out. I mean, a full-time job for the most part. He recommended, he actually recommended more, to hire a full-time person to do the job, but he said, if you don't hire a full-time person, then you need to let your benefits person have a very sizable raise, because they are taking on one heck of a job, if you put it all off on them. So they decided to go with the cheaper route. They did not want to hire another person. So one of the Finance Committee members came to me later on in my office and said, you think $9,000 is enough? And I said, I don't know. I'm not the one that's going to be doing it. You need to talk to the benefits person. So he and I together went to the benefits person and asked her, and she said, I would certainly be willing to try it for that amount, and thank you very much. So that's where that came in. Now, a little bit later on, the more I thought about it, the more I thought, you know, my other girls work hard. They don't get vacations. They don't get lunch break. They're there every day. And, you know, all of them had had some extra stuff added on to them, too. And I said, I went back to that finance person, and I said, I feel like I might have some hurt feelings, maybe some problems, whatever. Would it be okay if I took a couple of thousand from my benefits person and gave it to the other girls? And, of course, I checked with her, too, and she was good with it. And he said, it's your money. It's in the budget. Once it's approved, and it's already been approved, it's yours to do with as you will. And I think in the previous meeting, we had everybody agree that, even these people, that once it's in my budget, in the line item, I can spend it how I want to, as long as I don't try to move it out of that line item, or I don't try to move any other money into a payroll line item. I can spend it the way I want to. So for anybody who heard that huge number on the radio, I just wanted to explain what that number was about. And that person did take on a heck of a job. Anybody, I don't know if anybody else in here takes care of the Obamacare with people, but for the company that they work for, that is a horrendous job. So really, she probably should have gotten more than she did, but that's neither here nor there. Now, a couple of years later, one of the girls in my office quit, and I had some extra money at that point as well. Now, what normally happens, and has happened for several years now, so I think this sets precedent, when someone comes to work for the county, if they have worked for the county, say, four years prior to coming, say, they come to work for my office, and they've worked for the county for four years sometime in the past, or just the last four years, or they come to work in my office doing payroll, and they came from working four years, or six years, or eight or nine years doing payroll for someone else. Because of that experience, they are allowed on that wage scale to start. Say, a four-year, somebody with four years' experience starts on step five on that wage scale. Somebody with seven years would start at step eight on the wage scale. For whatever reason, my payroll person, when those people were hired, and it's my fault for not checking, I just assumed she was doing what she was supposed to be doing, all those girls who came to work for me, who had all those years' experience, they were set on step one on that wage scale, as low as you can possibly go. So when I saw opportunity, when I had that money in my budget, and I knew that I could do with it as I pleased, and I didn't spend all the extra money, but the girl who had four years prior experience working for the county, I gave her those four years. The girl who had six years working in payroll prior to coming to work for the county, I gave her four years. Should have given her six. Had another girl who had nine years working in payroll with a company that employed hundreds of people. I only gave her four. Should have given her nine, but I gave her four. And then I have another girl in there who I had put a ton of work off on her, Gasco 34, 1099. I mean, I've got, I don't have it with me, but I've got a huge list of all the extra responsibilities that were put on her, and I've, they all deserve it. Like I said, they don't ever get a lunch. They sit there and they work all day long. They deserve it. I never took a penny of this money for myself. I would not. If I had ever had any thought that I was doing anything at all wrong, none of it would have happened the way that it did. I wasn't raised that way. And having said that, let me cover one other subject that was brought to my attention at the very last minute in the last finance meeting we had, where this committee voted to fire me. And from what I'm understanding, this is the item that they think is so wrong. I'm just going to read a short paragraph here, so be patient with me. Okay, Jackie Selby, who is the Solid Waste Director. Maintenance proposal. Jackie made a proposal which involved some reorganization within solid waste. His plan included taking two of his employees, Jason Gasco and Mickey Brown, out of the maintenance of county general buildings, and giving them added responsibilities with solid waste. And these people were solid waste employees, but they were doing the county general buildings rather than doing solid waste. He said he felt he could reorganize and ultimately save enough money to be able to turn a penny, a tax penny, over to the county to go towards hiring a maintenance person for the Justice Center and the rest of the county general buildings. After much discussion, Kim Davidson made a motion to table the subject, was seconded, blah, 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 agreed to be brought up at a later meeting. So that means that was tabled. In other words, it's a no vote. However, when this was explained at this meeting last week, what was said was, those raises got a no vote. There's no mention whatsoever in this paragraph that I just read to you of raises. No mention whatsoever. What was tabled was the organization that he was wanting to do, to bring his people back into his payroll, into the solid waste, of course, they were being paid out of solid waste payroll, but he wanted them back in solid waste, out of county general, and was willing to donate a penny to county general to help them hire someone else to work just for county general. Now, having said that, sometime later, Jackie came to me on one of these employees, and a totally different employee that he wasn't talking about in this, and wanted to give raises because, not just, no reason, one of them was a truck driver for recycling. He left him on his full-time duty as truck driver, and also made him the recycling supervisor, which is what Jackie had been before he was promoted to solid waste director. The other person was maintenance, and remained maintenance in the county, so nothing changed as far as anybody's jobs, but he was also given the additional job of being solid waste director, because there was not a solid waste director. And Jackie said, when I'm out of town, these people need to have somebody that they can go to, if they have a problem. So these guys kept their same jobs, but they were also given additional jobs on top of that. So he wanted to give them a dollar raise to do that. And he asked me about giving them the raise. I said, if you've got the money, yes, you can do it. And so it wasn't in their particular line items, but it was in his line item that he had vacated, because he was moved over to the solid waste director line item. So his line item was wide open, and these are not the first people who have ever been paid out of two different lines. It goes on quite a bit in the Board of Education and a little bit in the county. There are other people in the county who are paid out of separate lines. Now, having said that, there's where I may have made a mistake that I didn't know about till about 5:30 tonight. I was talking to Ben Rogers, and I was explaining all this, and he said, what you did was fine. However, he said, with that being, and I shouldn't tell you this, but I'm an honest person, and so, here I go. He said, with Jackie being directly under the county executive, he said, probably Jackie should have gone to the county executive and gotten approval from him, and then brought it back to you. I said, okay, I understand that. What about ambulance service, all these other people who are directly under him? He said, probably the same thing. Now, having said that, then I've messed up a whole bunch, because I have, over the years, been getting requests for increases from Gary Peterson. He was there, and every single director since then, there've been three since him. I'm sure I got them from Fay Dalton. I don't even see all of them. A lot of them just go, they went straight to Frida to payroll, and she implemented them, and I don't always see them. But, and he said, I'm not sure about that. That's something I would have to check into, to see if that's truly how it has to be. And I said, it doesn't matter. It's over with at this point, anyway. But if I messed up on that part of it, I truly apologize. It wasn't me trying to be unfair about anything. It was just something I didn't realize was a proper step, so. And I'm sure there's lots more I can say, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Nobody has anything else? I'll entertain a motion recess.
Larry Cooper was the Commissioner that talked-
How can you have an investigation by your financial board, when one of them don't even know about it?
Larry Cooper was the Commissioner that talked to Marcia about it.
Melissa, listen.
No.
I've known you for a long time. I'm gonna respond one time, and I've been told that I can't talk about it until litigation's over. But I have never once went with Marcia to Mickey and said, "We're gonna give you a $9,000 raise."
So you're sitting there alive.
Melissa?
Let me tell you something. Marcia Delp has never, she is the most honest person in the world.
And I'm not.
And she is.
And I'm not.
And she is the honest person. And she stood here and explained absolutely everything that y'all accused her of.
You're just gonna be rid of her. You're just gonna be rid of her. And I will be good.
You wanted rid of her, and y'all succeeded. So you should apologize.
You watch. Y'all are gonna think my par. I support you, Larry Cooper. That's one. But that'll never happen again.
That's fine.
I'm gonna give you damn right.
Motion recess?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Recess till 28th.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally-owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.